She gonna be on that?
This isn't just elementary, it's middle school and high school too.
Well, yes, the primary.
So does that mean we're going to have to look at and sort of?
I do gain crystal.
Good man. Okay, all right, thank you. I wanted the, um, to look at the board. We didn't have. And we also, there's no reason for a list. And you put out a list. It's not us, not the board, it's the district that's due. Just we have what they want to do. And then ask us and we say, okay, cool.
That's what you sent us, right? I just, I just, I spent my time on budget. I tell you what, those are the most important things. I can get all my news out there.
Just because we've always done.
I know, no worries.
How are your face?
Thank you.
I know you like having all the information I didn't want to.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Make sure you get that in the video, what she's doing.
No.
Yeah, but, oh my lord. Falling apart over here.
She said, you are not, I'll take her back, she's fighting like a bad.
Might not be graceful, but it's offensive.
I don't know what's going on for today, but she has something on. Anyway.
Oh, and me too. This year.
More TVs. More TV. Thank you, thank you.
Little pin pouch. All around the county, registered and could win a prize.
Nice, thank you.
Joseph's gonna be here right away. Yeah. Oh, okay. Here it is.
Okay, welcome everyone to our, uh, special board meeting, uh, on March twenty-first. Uh, glad everyone's here today. Um, Ms. Bowie, would you please call the roll? Thank you.
Good morning, Pete Wildeboer.
Present.
Melissa Mason.
Here.
Josie Barnhart. Pat Bradford.
I am here.
Stephanie Craybill.
Here.
Dee McManus.
Present.
And Stephanie Walker.
Here.
All right, um, next we need to approve the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Send it.
Is there a second?
Second.
First and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, passes six zero. Uh, next we have our closed session, so moving to closed session. Uh, I call for the, uh, I call for a motion to go into closed session pursuant to, uh, General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen eleven C, for the following purpose, to prevent disclosure of information's privileged or confidential pursuant to General Statute one fifteen C, four oh two, and not consider public record with, within the meaning of chapter one thirty-two of the General Statute, and two, to prevent disclosure of student records rendered confidential under the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, uh, twenty USC one two three two G. Do I hear such a motion?
Send it.
Is there a second?
Second.
First and second, all, uh, excuse me, any discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are in closed session.
Okay. Board has been seated. All right, we are back in open session. Last bit of business is to close out our first meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five. Did you join? Okay, five. That passes five zero. And looking at the time, we are a few minutes late. I do apologize for that. I will call our next meeting to order, which is our budget workshop. I do have a brief statement I'd like to start with. I would like to make a brief statement to begin our session today. I was stopped the other day as my wife and I took our dogs on a walk. A neighbor shared with me the solution to our budget shortfall. I've heard various candidates share their solutions, also heard various ideas of who to blame for this. We can go through the whole list, but I'm not going to do that this time. I'm sure everyone probably does have some blame in this current shortfall. But most importantly, and really what matters, is the Board of Education is working hard and will continue to work hard with our partners, the county commissioners, to solve this problem and do what is very best for our students and for our staff. At this point, I would ask Ms. Bowie to call the roll, please.
Good morning. Pete Wildaboard.
Present.
Melissa Mason.
Here.
Josie Barnhart.
Here.
Pat Bradford.
I am here.
Stephanie Craybill.
Here.
Hugh McManus.
Here.
And Stephanie Walker.
Here.
Thank you for being here. Next bit of business is to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? First and second, any discussion? If not all, oh, we have Ms. Craybill.
I would like to make a motion to add a closed session at some point in this meeting. We are going to be hearing about some personnel. Some of the handouts talked about personnel and, you know, and I think that I have some questions that I would like to ask, and I sense it's personnel and it could be easily decide, you know, identifiable to an employee that hasn't been told that their position is in that, you know, reduction. So if it makes more sense to have the closed session after we hear Ashley's report, if we're going to vote on something, I would like to have the opportunity for us to have a closed session discussion.
I do not believe there is any vote for today. Is there? Is that? No.
I would still like to have a closed session so that we are, we understand what we're hearing.
We have a motion or a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, there was first and second. To add a closed session, I would assume that would be a, probably a six, so right before the adjournment?
It doesn't matter to me. The, if we put it before, I think we should hear Ashley's presentation before we have that. So either, either number five and make number five number six, or at the end, it doesn't, it doesn't matter to me.
Okay. Okay. All right. Would you call the roll? So we have a motion to add a closed session. Let's say five, and we'll do the consensus when we come out of closed session. Ms. Bowie, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Wildaboard.
Yes.
Ms. Mason.
Yes.
Ms. Bradford.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Barnhart.
Yes.
Ms. Craybill.
Yes.
Mr. McManus.
Yes.
And Ms. Walker.
Yes.
Okay, so that passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Sure. We'll add that as number five and move the consensus down to number six. We have a motion and second now to approve the agenda as amended. All favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. That's a seven zero. Would you please join me now? Ms. Bradford will be leading us in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And once again, look at that. I always get Bradford and Barnhart mixed up. I guess I did it again. I apologize for that. We're going to continue on. Ms. Sutton, we'll give you the podium.
As Ashley is preparing, I just wanted to bring to everyone, so, you know, we are still working with planning numbers. We have to get our, we haven't received our federal planning numbers and the state has not technically assigned us their, their planning numbers. So this is still at the worst case scenario. We are, and I will share this, we are working with the commissioners and the commissioners have been working with us. We had a meeting, Wildaboard and Ms. Bradford and myself, met with some county commissioners back in February, and we are, they're working on numbers, we're working on numbers. So it's not that we aren't doing anything. It's not that they aren't doing anything. We're both working, we have to wait on planning numbers, and so we have to give everyone the opportunity to work through the planning numbers. So what you're seeing specifically with federal dollars is there was rumor mill that there would be, and rumor mill, not rumor mill, through the state, that there would be a 15 percent reduction. So we have to work through that, but we can't, we have to work worst case. And so that's what that looks like. State, we work, work, uh, worst case. Local is worst case because there are no planning numbers. So we have shared, and I've shared with our county manager, that we would be basically going all the way up to the, the final date before we can bring it to them. And so he has said that they would, they are in agreeance to that so that we can make sure that we get all of the numbers that we need. When I say numbers, those are student numbers, because with us, the revenue comes with the student numbers. So that's what's going on right now. Um, this.
What was the question? I'm sorry.
When is the final date?
It's like May the second.
Yeah, so we are required by, I think it was April 15th, to submit something to the And if we're not going to meet that, then we can have a conversation with the county manager and ask for.
Right.
Some assistance on that day.
And that's where we, we are with that. So again, this is, not a lot has changed since our last meeting, other than we have had to start having conversations, but the numbers that you're going to see will still be with the worst case scenario. Just want to make that aware.
Mr. McManus?
Ms. Dr. Faust, did I misunderstand or misinterpret, as I left the county school factory yesterday, that there were some positive views coming from the county commissioners?
Yes, there were.
Supporting us.
Yes, they have, and that has been from the begin, there's never been a, they won't, do they, there, there's a conversation that has been going on. So I just want people to understand that we aren't, they're not the bad guy, we're not the bad guy, and it, there has been conversations that have been going on for several weeks, actually, up and prior to the meeting that we had. Ashley and I had, had met with the county before then.
I just have a question. Are we going to have another joint meeting? I think you should.
So that was also a conversation that was talked about.
Do we don't have dates?
We have not gotten dates yet. I needed to bring that back. That was a conversation that we were having on yesterday.
Maybe we can get one by the end, oh, wait.
Oh, yeah, we definitely have to. I'm 100% behind that. Definitely 100%. Other board members?
Yeah, I just had a comment too. So if, if there is another meeting with you, Dr. Faust, your chief financial officer, can another board member attend? That seems like only one board member gets to go, so want to make sure that they hear from a diverse group of people on the board.
Well, that's what we used to do, remember?
Right, I do remember that. That's why I asked.
Yeah, yeah. So, absolutely.
Just so everyone knows, when we learned we had this drastic shortfall, I went to a county commissioner and I said, can you help us? Can the endowment help us? What can we do? I'm chairman of the finance committee, and I felt that was within my purview to do. And Commissioner Skelace said, yes, I will help. And he went to his board and they said, yeah, we think we can maybe meet, maybe we can do something to help, but it's going to have to have some term limits on it, it's going to have to be tight. And so I went to our chairman, who then went to our superintendent, then we had a joint meeting. Nothing, nothing, absolutely nothing was not by the book. We are hopeful that we can work things out, but it's going to take all seven of us to vote in the same direction in order for that to happen. There's no guarantees in what the county has said they might be willing to do if we don't cooperate with them. Thank you.
Just briefly, I just wish you'd have told me, since I'm on the finance committee.
Same. I'm on the finance committee. We didn't even know that was happening.
Well, we didn't have, I didn't call the finance committee meeting.
Of course. You don't have permission.
You could email them. You could have called, checked.
The committee chairs do not have the authority to do that.
Yes, ma'am. You're the expert. Thank you so much for the correction.
Let's go ahead and let Ms. Sutton talk, because that's what we're here for. Thank you, Sutton.
Okay, thank you. Good after, good morning, everyone. Ready for the afternoon already. So before I get started, I did want to just share, I know a lot of you have, board members have submitted requests to me. I really tried to get to as many as I possibly could, but with developing this budget draft and just the normal operations of the finance division, I did not get a chance to get to everything that was submitted to me. So I will get to those and include those in the memos. I just wanted everyone to know I hadn't forgotten about those things, but I will get those as soon as I can. Today, we are going to be talking about our revenue projections again. We're going to include a recommended county funding request, and that request was what was used to develop this but draft budget that I'm sharing with you today. And we'll go over the changes that were included in this draft budget, which includes position changes and also the non-salary, some non-salary line items. And just keep in mind, as we're going through this presentation and just talking about budget in general, your total revenue projections is what you're using to determine your spending levels. So our revenue projections are driving, are helping us determine what our budget needs to be for expenditures for next year. Okay, so we're going to start with revenue projections. As you can see here, we're planning for state revenue to be 192.6 million. Local current expense, we're planning in this draft budget for 100.2 million. County revenue request for local is an increase of 4.5 million, as you see here, and we'll talk more about this on a future slide. But we're going to ask that the county continue to fund us at the same level as this year, which is the 94 million, and then also request another 4.5 million. Fines and forfeitures, projected revenues, 1.7 million. Federal, 13.5 million, and our capital outlay is 10.8 million. And that includes county request of 8.8 million and state capital request of 2 million. I'm just going to echo what Dr. Faust said in the beginning. You know, we're using historical data, second month enrollment numbers for this year to be able to project these revenues. We do not yet have anything from DPI for state or federal revenue planning numbers. Before we go on, I also wanted to share, this is normally by this time of the year, we would have at least state planning numbers. Normally, we get those in February, maybe early March. The reason they're later this year, and I'm honestly not sure when we'll receive the state planning numbers, is because the state is actually looking at making the change that we have talked about before. Instead of projecting student enrollment numbers for the upcoming year, they're looking at changing that funding formula to start funding in arrears. And so that has gone to the general assembly for vote, but that has not been voted on yet. And so DPI doesn't, I'm not sure that they're going to want to release planning numbers until that vote happens. And so that's another thing that's kind of making us project out revenue to this point where maybe in the past, we would have had projections already, I mean, planning numbers already.
Ms. Sutton, would you prefer us to wait on our questions or take them as, as Craybill questions now?
If this related to.
I'll start writing them down, if you, if you would prefer.
If this related to revenue, like this screen that we're on, then I'm okay with trying to answer those questions.
So for fines and, oh.
Yeah, I got you.
For fines and forfeitures of 1.7 million, is, that goes, that starts in July?
Yes.
Okay. So is this 1.7 million what we project to get, or is this what we have gotten in the past, or is this where we are year to date?
What we project to get next year.
Okay.
And we use the last four or five years historically, what we've received, to make that estimate.
Okay. Thank you.
Could you explain what funding in arrears means?
Yes. So what that means is instead of projecting what student enrollment is going to be for the upcoming year, the state is looking at using current year information. And so what's being proposed is second month student enrollment numbers and funding based on that number for the next year. And so what's been submitted for vote is they would use that number for their planning, revenue planning number. And then once, we're in the new year and we have actual second month student enrollment numbers, if the numbers are higher than the arrears number that they use for planning, then we would receive that additional revenue. However, if it was lower, they would not pull the money back, which is what they do now. You know, they pulled back, I think it was around 1.9 million this year from us because our student numbers were down. So they wouldn't do that if this formula is changed next year. They would give us a year to recover and plan, and then the reduction would happen in the next year.
Do we know about the final one for the vote?
I do not have that information.
When they're in session, obviously.
Yes.
And if, session start date, the 24th?
Any other questions? No, Sutton?
Okay. And so this screen, we're showing our county funding request. Now, this request is based on the budget, draft budget that we've been working on. And so of course. And so of course, if something changes in that draft budget, we would make adjustments here. But just based on what our planning document has now, we would need a county local current appropriation of the 98.5 million dollars you see here. And then we would also be asking for a capital request of 8.8 million, which would be a total county request of 107 million. The local current expense increase of the 4.5 million would be used to allow time for natural attrition of positions. Amount shown here for preschool grant and the scholarship is the same as the current year.
When you're talking scholarship appropriation, is that the scholarships that we give to students?
Yes. And we'll talk more about that in the coming slide. So I wanted to give a little bit more information about what I'm calling the general appropriation that we receive from the county, so that's not related to the preschool or the scholarships. And so that general appropriation, historically, the funding for that has been based on our student enrollment, as we've talked about before. Our student enrollment in this budget draft is anticipating 26,889 students. The students related to Hanover County schools is 24,858, with the remaining 2,031 would be charter school enrollment. Comparing to how the county funded us this year, it's actually a 543 reduction in number of students. However, we would be asking through this request that the county not reduce us for the enrollment decrease, that they let us continue to receive the 94 million.
Yeah? Dr. McManus?
I have to ask, you know, if we're at 24,858 for our enrollment, how much have you factored in this opportunity scholarship? Apparently, the applications across the state have just been overwhelming it. It actually crashed the site when it opened. So many people are taking advantage of it. And then we have charter, then we have charter virtual. How much have you taken into consideration there? How accurate do you feel like you are with that factor that we don't know about? Are you able to go into the, to DPI and ask them, how many of these are New Hanover County? I know we have the statewide number. Last time I looked, it was like 72,000, but that was early on. Are you able to find out how many for New Hanover County, so that we can budget appropriately?
So I have not taken that into account with this number, because we're building the budget, assuming the state's going to do funding in arrears. And that would mean, if our student numbers are less than this, we would have a year to recover, to come up with a plan for that. So I have not taken that into account with this number.
Ms. Walker and Ms. Crabbell?
You made me a scribble on the same email with me, but like, there was an email that we read recently from NC org. I don't know if you get that unless, or that actually does talk about how many people in New Hanover have taken advantage of the scholarship. And I don't know how that affects us necessarily. These might be parents that are already in these schools. I don't know how we would know. I mean, unless we ask them if they're leaving just because of the scholarship, I wouldn't know.
And if they were not, in our schools, like, there could be some people taking, asking for that scholarship that are in our schools currently, if that makes sense. They may already not be included in our enrollment number.
Yeah, I just wanted to share that, I thought I had it pulled up here, but when I attended the short session, the update on the short session seminar that the NCSBA did yesterday, and the spring law conference, they gave us a link, so that we can see clearly where students in New Hanover County are going. So I will send that to you, but I did, I, I think I must have just knocked it off, but the, it's in our handouts. But you, it's a map, and it says exactly where New Hanover County students, New Hanover County schools, New Hanover County children are taking advantage. So I'll send that to you guys after this meeting.
Thank you, appreciate that. Ms. Barnhart?
I'm sure you have that too.
Ms. Sutton, just for clarification, are you in favor of the funding in arrears model? Because if they're voting on it in short session, then we'd have an opportunity to let our representatives know. Yes, so we are in favor of that funding model. I just want to, I want that for the record.
And, and the reason being, it gives us a year if student numbers are declining, instead of them pulling back the funding during the year after we've already built our budget plan. And so it is forcing us to be very conservative with our revenue projections. However, I think because our projections have always been higher than actual, I think it puts us in a better place as far as ensuring our budget's conservative. Okay. I also wanted to share on this screen that our request, as you can see here, 89.2 million would be allocated to New Hanover County schools of the 96.5 million of that general appropriation request. And the other 7.3 million would be the required transfer to the charter schools based on their enrollment. Here's a little more information related to the preschool grant. As you can see, and we had talked about on a previous slide, the ask would be to, for the county to continue funding at the same level as the current year. And so that would be 1.9 million related to the preschool grant, which would allow us to fund 10 preschool classrooms and serve 162 preschool students. However, this is a reduction of two classes due to the cost of increases in salaries and benefits, even though it's the same level of funding being requested. And then the teaching fellow scholarships, we're asking to continue that funding at 56,000, which will provide for the four scholarships, the, I'm sorry, the four-year scholarships that we've been providing to students, where the students agree to teach in New Hanover County schools for four years.
Dr. McManus?
Are you able to say the reduction of two classes compared to current year, is that something we need to do in closed session? Or, you know, when we're reducing two classes in preschool, why?
Because we don't have enough funding, so if we were to ask that the county continue funding at the same level as this year, we wouldn't have enough money for those additional, those two classes, which is why we have that reduction there.
So what will happen to those students?
My, I, I don't know that I'm able to answer the question. My guess, since that's not my area, is that when we're enrolling students for the next year, we would enroll less.
Walker?
So I have a follow-up question to that. Do, do they typically fund less? It says two classes, less because of the rising costs, but do they, do they fund classrooms or class, I'm trying to find the right word, I apologize. I just, they're given a certain amount of money that they say covers a certain amount of classroom spaces, is what I'm saying. Are they, because I've heard them describe it, we, we fund X amount of classroom spaces. But it seems to me like they need to know that, need to, probably, if they want to keep it consistent with what they've normally funded, instead of reducing it, I imagine they might want to know that it's cost.
And we have, we've had meetings with them, and we have shared with them at the same level of funding, it would be a reduction of the two classes, so the budget staff for the county are aware of that.
We are having conversations with them, so just keep in mind, this is worst-case scenario, but they are aware. So we are having that conversation.
Two classrooms is what, 30 children, 30 students?
Yes. Roughly, well, in the county, with the county, the numbers can be a little different, but you're talking about roughly 30 students.
Ms. Barnhart?
Ms. Sutton, what would that number need to increase to keep all 10 classes? So that those two classrooms, what would that be, that additional ask, because current, what you're saying, giving us worst-case operational, but what would that dollar amount be to?
I don't have that with me, but I can certainly provide that information.
Thank you.
Probably could just divide the number out and.
Ms. McManus and Dr. McManus?
Two-part question. What would you do with the classes that were not used for pre-K? And would there be a possibility, given the worst scenario, that TAs could take a class, a small class, so we could get all those kids enrolled, and they would be joined next door with the actual teacher? Just putting out there, we're all trying to find a solution.
There are a lot of regulations with pre-K, so that is not an opportunity to, that would not be an option. As far as the classrooms go, the physical classrooms, it would depend what location they are, what building they are. But pre-K comes with a lot of regulations, and that would not be an option.
Ms. Dr. McManus?
Just an observation, Ms. Sutton. The county is really robustly in favor of pre-K, and I can't imagine them liking this scenario. So I, I just can't imagine them wanting us to reduce two classrooms in pre-K for this next year, I can't see it.
So I just did a quick, quick math. I mean, I'm not great at math, I'm just, I took the numbers now, and then the 30 students, it's like 304,600 dollars, something to that effect. So if we wanted to ask them to maintain, we would probably have to ask for that.
Ms. Sutton?
This budget was developed using the information you see here. State mandated salary costs and benefit increases. The average raise is about 4%. Social Security, we have built in to remain the same at the 7.65%. The retirement rate remained the same at 25.2%. And based on the biannual budget, state budget this year, we are anticipating a 7% increase in health insurance.
Ms. Sutton, it seems like we, we're saying that the state increases are a big part of why we're in this problem. But I don't hear that the counties surrounding us are in this crisis. Have you reached out to your counterparts to see, you know, where they're falling with this? Because it can't be an anomaly if, if this has happened across the state, statewide, 115 districts, why are we the one with this huge shortfall?
This is across the state. Most, most LEAs are in the same situation we are. And I don't recall the numbers. Dr. Faust might remember those better than me. But I know Johnston County is looking at asking their county commissioners for about 10 million. And I know Wake and Charlotte Meck have some big increases to their counties for this year. And so it, I will say, our student enrollment decline over the past four year, has, four years has not helped us, because we did have a plan. But with the student decline and the increases in raises and benefits being higher than we had anticipated, our planning, you know, just didn't hold up with all that change. I didn't know, you might know more than what I shared.
All right. Ms. Barnhart?
Ms. Sutton, for planning purposes, I've expressed, what we know, that the state is going to continuously give increases. So we're, we're coming to this plateau of just trying to level, right? But we don't want to keep coming year after year to this point of having to cut staff. So since we've hit a stable number of students, are we putting in our plan to include a percentage of raises, so that we can maintain consistency with our staff year after year and have sustainability? I don't know if that's built in this budget yet, but that is something I'm personally in favor of, so that our county can plan for intentionally giving raises that match the state. We already do it anyway. But, so that we can maintain that staffing population that we have.
So in this current budget that we're developing, I have not taken that into account, because I'm projecting with this revenue, what I think the revenue is that we're, we're going to receive, which, as Dr. Faust has said, is worst-case scenario. But we have had that conversation with the county budget team, the concern with inflation and the rising salaries and benefits.
Ms. Walker?
I just wanted to add, to your point about other asking county, Wake County is asking for 50 million. So I know their, their district is a lot larger than ours, but it just is indicative of the problem and the concern with not having enough funding to match some of these funds. People do go to town.
Just for a point of clarity, when, when the, when the state gets, tells us, or says we're giving a 4% increase, that on the surface means the people that they pay for, right? And then, but from our district's point of view, we are responsible for the 4% for anybody else that, of federal or local position. So we, we, that's where the money builds up, is when we have more people, is that right?
That's correct.
Sure we know that, okay. And the same with like, social security and the retirement and health, that they'll give us for what they pay for, and we cover all the rest. Okay.
That's correct.
And so to piggyback on that, the number, am I right? Is locally, we pay for, is it 883 jobs that the state doesn't cover, that we pay for out of local money? And of those, if I'm right, 145 are teachers? Is that right?
That sounds about right.
Okay. It's a good thing to consider.
Yeah. Okay. This slide provides a summary of our position changes. I do want to bring to your attention, since our last work session where we went over summary of position changes, I believe it was mid, early February, we have continued to evaluate our resources and tried to make adjustments to the plan as best we could. And so as a result of that, as we're going through, you will see some changes in the position types, where the total number of positions is the same, the, some of these position types and the numbers have changed based on the continued budget development since last time we went over this slide. As you can see here, the school reduction of positions is 7.6, I'm sorry, yeah, 7.46%. And then 18.2% at the central office.
Is the, is the decimal point of a person, is that like a, like is .75, is that like a FTE?
Yes, correct.
Is that what that is? Okay.
Yeah. So people that may not be 100% employed, they might be part-time, we're taking that into account, so, yes.
Could you just explain real quick, like, I mean, I'm, I'm clear on like, .25, .5, .75, but what's a .09? Like, does a person work 10 minutes a day, you know?
Well, when you add up all the points together, then you, you, you know. And then some of these could be bus drivers or cafeteria. I mean, it could be positions that are split across different positions. Like, maybe they're not 100% a bus driver, maybe they're, I'm just using this as an example. Not sure if it's a good example, but they might be a child who work in a cafeteria part of the day, and they may work as a bus driver part of the day.
So for us, just our minds, do we just sort of round it, just for?
The other thing is sometimes a portion of a person's salary may be paid out of a grant, or something like that.
Okay, okay.
That could account for some of those strange percentages.
Okay.
Ms. Dr. McManus and Ms. Walker?
Thank you.
Okay, just so I make sure I understand this one right, because it's, it's not as clear to me. In 2004, we have 2,009, what did I say, 2004, 2024, wish it was 20 years ago. We have 2,997 and some change number of employees in the schools. And in the central office, we have 306.05. And so we're proposing to, to drop that down by 7.46 for school personnel, and by 18.20 for central office. So it's still, central office is still, I'm, don't hold me on my math here, but it's, it was more than 10% of central office of our entire personnel. But now it's going to drop down to roughly about 10% of the ratio between central office staff and personnel. We've gotten a lot of emails from people about, reduce central office, reduce central office, reduce central office. And I'm just trying to see if I'm understanding this right.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Walker?
So this is kind of a tough question, and I know that you're, you are all saying this is worst-case scenario. But I'm a little concerned that I've been told by quite some people, they've already been told their jobs are gone. And I would like to know why that is the case, since we have just really started talking about it. And we're in negotiation.
Yes.
All of us have heard it.
Yes.
And I just don't understand. I know you can't answer that.
Yeah, I'm not able to answer that question. Yeah, I'm not able to answer that question.
But I guess maybe somebody should.
So, we have begun doing initial allotment meetings with principals because they have to do their planning for their class sizes. They have to schedule for next year. So, every principal has given, has been given sort of their allotment for next year based on their projected enrollment. We have told all principals though that, that we are not talking to staff until we have a clear understanding of what the budget is going to look like. So, some of these have been, come through other avenues or people have said, oh, I've heard this, but I've told principals and even kind of reinforced with an email this week that until HR comes out and meets with the principal and any affected employee, that all this stuff is a worst case scenario until we know more.
Ms. McManus?
Well, I'm just saying, I'm not hearing it obviously from principals, so it's, you know, it can fall, but, you know, it's not just in the school realm. I've heard it from actually the school realm. Like, they, they were told they're gone. So, I, I just want to put that out there.
Ms. McManus?
One of the things I enjoy the most about this job has been visiting schools. And I've heard it from a lot of administrators, which I would never throw them under the bus. And I think what's happening, which I'm, again, two parts. I'm disappointed, we haven't discussed as a board, positions in, at all. And so, the fact that they were told, and if I understand correctly, and hoping you have an answer, basically they were told, worst case scenario, but still that right here, that if I have twenty-five positions, I may end up with fifteen. And I think what they were told is the state, basically what the state would gain per pupil. So, if they had twenty state positions and they right now had twenty-eight teachers, then probably lose those eight or collaborative of big staff. Is that accurate? Because we, we, why didn't we anticipate this back in the fall? And we knew more about where we were gonna be. And I know that the ESRA funds we discussed and those individuals were told at the time that that would run out, but as it continued to, people booed, left, we didn't follow through until that person, now you're gonna be employed with ESRA funds and remember, that's gonna stop. And I think that's, to me, the heart of this explosion. Ninety-one billion dolla, a million dollars we got over three years. I think this year was forty or forty-one.
Yes, you're right.
And so, we could have, and I'm not slamming anybody, just in retrospect, maybe we should have, and I think somebody asked earlier, are we thinking about this now for next year and the following year? I won't be here, but I can tell you what, you need to think about it. Almost, which I was running against, just so I could have something to say. But that was the time to be planning and I don't think we did as good a job as we could have done, board included.
So, we did. And we knew this. In May of twenty-two, the, the board received a sheet that told us if we do X, it's gonna take X. If we do X, it's gonna, there were three or four different scenarios that we gave and we chose that scenario. And so, that said, two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty some positions. So, we have-
Shared it.
And here we'd bring back the budget and would say, but we weren't allowed to cut. And so, this is why we have to come to a hard stop. Now, we of course are still operating in worst case scenario. I would say to any board member, if someone is coming to you and saying that they have been shared, ask for the letter. Because if they've received a letter, that's the only way, the word of mouth, if they, you know, there was the list that was on there, so it was posted all over social media. So, if an individual fell into that, they were probably saying that. But what they have to say is, here's the letter that I've received. This is when I met with this person. To my understanding, there has not been any letters, well, I know there's not been any letters, that we have not generated any letters to say that this is, your position is ending on X date because of budget.
Was this not discussed in the process meeting at some point?
Say more.
In the process meetings, you didn't discuss the cuts?
We've been discussing cuts for some time that we didn't, we didn't, we weren't, we've been generic that we haven't had to, we haven't given. The only time they got specifics is when they came in for their allotment meeting. And so, we have to do that to build the budget to make sure, because if we just don't do anything, well, we know what it looks like. Then it's the, you know, the twenty plus, and that's what it is. But we have to be proactive. So, we have been forecasting. This goes all into effect, as I said, once we get planning numbers and then the board says this is what we can, what we can stomach. And of course, we brought it to you and I brought it and we can go back and forth over when and why, but we did, we actually did, we did say that.
Ms. Barnhart?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm gonna say this as tactfully as I can because I understand these are people's jobs and so trying to get people into a different spot. I feel like the board is going to make a higher ask by the county commissioners. And I, I just want it on the record, so looking at central office staff and school staff, I'm gonna be fighting in more support of keeping some of our school staff positions. And so, as we're looking at priorities, and I don't know where this falls today or if this is another session, but if we're going to make an ask of more money and sustainable budget, I just want to put it on the record that the central office cuts are gonna stay where it is and the movement in the school is where I want to prioritize increasing staff. And I don't, I don't know how to say that tactfully beyond that, but if there's a person who's a classified staff that we can put into a school building somewhere in central office, I'm in favor of that. Somebody who currently has a coaching role back in the classroom, things like that, those are the kind of conversations that I know are being had. But I just want to say that openly to the board because that's in my head and in my heart where we need to have those conversations at. And I just want to openly state it today.
Ms. Barnhart, Ms. Walker?
I'll just say this. Based on feedback that we get in emails, because we all get them, their concerns over AIG staff being told their positions are gone. And I don't have a letter in front of me, but it's out there in the, the ether and we all know it, we feel it. We've all had discussions. And so, I don't know, I don't have a letter in front of me, but I can tell you that's what I've been, that's what I've been told and I believe it to be true. So, I hope that doesn't happen, especially, especially on the high school level. And I'll tell you why. I have personal experience with the value of those folks in that school. Got my daughter. It, it just benefited her greatly for her scholarships, for her, for her applications, for her ACT, everything. So, I will just say to Ms. Barnhart's point, I'm gonna be advocating for certain folks too. So, I agree with you as well, though.
Ms. McManus?
Well, I agree with both of you, but I want to add to what Josie said. In fact, if we do cut, I hope that pre-K is the first thing that we attack. In fact, that ends up because I think the law-
Like cutting it?
That we're gonna lose two classrooms for pre-K.
You're saying to act.
So, that should be first on our priority list because that's where it starts. And we discover early.
Yeah, and I, I will chime in and say, you know, I agree with all of you. And Ms. Barnhart, I mean, I know we're talking about people. I get that. But when central office staff is ten percent of the entire staff and you've reduced it one percent in this budget, you've come down one percent, you know, you know, in the ratio is what I'm talking about. Yeah, we're cutting two hundred and twenty-three point six three positions in the school district, but just fifty-five point seven in the central office. I think that percentage has to be higher. And I'm not being mean. I don't have anybody in mind. It's just, you know, we're top-heavy. We've always been top-heavy. And we, we, you know, we need kindergarten more than we need positions in, in central office at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Grabill.
Yeah, two things. One, the, I was thinking in my head when I, you know, we've, we've all been hearing the, the visits. The, do, would it, would it be fair to say that the visits were talking to principals about this is what the state allot and this is what you have as a starting point? Is that, is, is that a fair assumption?
Let me help you understand.
Okay, okay.
So, we do this on a normal.
Right.
We actually then set up a model for them to go in and put in the, they have a budget with their school and they can go and put in how much, how many teachers, whatever the positions they want. It actually subtracts from them. And then we also say, okay, if you want this, then you have to pull this. So, we have built them, we do this all the time. What I, what is happening is we don't have enough students for the staff that we have. And so, when we increased, when we voted to do the seventeen dollars, the, the rate was-
Fifteen, I think, was it?
What, when that happened, that was millions of dollars. That wasn't approved by the county. We did that without the approval. So, how did we have to do that? We had to take four million each year out of the fund balance to support that. On top of that raise, then the state was continuing to give raises. So, we put ourselves there, but we never thought, well, I did tell you, I actually did say, if you can go back and watch it, I told you all what would happen. But all of these scenarios that you're given, we have done this. Like, we are sitting down with the principals. We walk them through. The principals are actually even telling us, this is the position that I would rather. I can do this one with this one. I can do this one. I can give fifty percent. They can work in a classroom and fifty percent they can do this. They have different ratios that they are choosing to do. But what we're doing is that we're looking at how much. So, we don't have a lot of people. When we say, we are very lean at the central offices. When you look at those positions, when you, it's just not the office on-
Like these people?
Yeah, it's not that, no. We have over at the, the north, there, there are bus drivers and people that are over there, there are tuition people that are there, there are accounts payable people. If you get rid of all of these people, we have a business that runs on the other side that you have to pay. So, who does the account, accounts receivable? If you get rid of that, who does the ordering? Who does the printing? Who does the, the driving of, because we don't just have bus drivers, who are people who deliver, who move furniture, who put things together, who build things? Those are the things that you have to think. It's not just people who are sitting down or who runs your paycheck. I need, I need you to run whatever. If the board member's saying, hey, I need this run for this meeting. That's not these people who are running those things. Those are other people in these buildings. So, we have to actually consider. So, when you say that the eighteen percent, that's a huge, because the, the number is going to be bigger because it's less much. So, if you have twenty-seven hundred people, of course, you know, two hundred does have a smaller reduction. When you just look at the, the fraction, and I mean, I'm not gonna do a math lesson for you. But what I will say is, individuals have, are cut to the point where these people are out here getting nervous because once it's gone, it's gone. Like, we are literally going in and pulling, well, we don't have this department anymore. That's what we're doing.
That's what I thought, so.
Ms. Barnhart?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I guess that's why, what I'd like to know, I don't think today is the day that we're doing this, but the board, I feel like the board needs to come together and look at where the cuts are and say, hey, if, if we don't cut these EC teachers, how much money is that asked? If we don't cut these two pre-K, that's four hundred thousand. And to come together, because I, Ms. Sutton is presenting us a balanced budget. Thank you very much for that. But I feel like it's our job to prioritize where the needs are and to have those conversations. And that hasn't happened yet. I mean, it's happened individually with, with one another and with county commissioners and things. But if there's a way that we can come together to hash out that, to say, hey, Ms. Sutton, we want to direct you guys to bring a budget that's, I don't know, because we're already asking for an additional four point five million just for natural attrition to cover the cost of increase. So, we're already asking for an increased budget of four point five million. But what does that look like? Do we really want to ask for an increased budget of nine million more? I don't know what that number is, but that's, that's the kind of conversations that the county commissioners want from us. How much more money do you need? Where is it gonna go? And if we don't have that prioritization session, I don't think we're gonna come to full agreement until we do.
Ms. Bradford?
I, I agree with Ms. Barnhart completely. And I understand that we may make you people at the table nervous, but we have an entire county of parents that are panicking, panicking. And we have to be accountable to them.
If you can't get the work done, then what do you do? That's the other question that you have to think about. If you don't have anyone to do the work, when individuals are calling and there's no one to receive the call, it's, this is a, this is a hard part. And Ms. Sutton said it, this is gonna be a difficult budget season, but you have to think of it on both sides. And that's why we put positions on there and not names. So that we have to, we have to sometimes just look at it through that lens, which is hard.
Ms. McManus, then Ms. Grabill?
As Ms. Bradford said, we, we're getting understandably beat up with all of the statements and not sure what is gonna be cut or who's gonna be cut. So, what people are doing now is understandably, they're not fighting back, but they're certainly expressing their, their feelings. And I'm sure that we're at all time low when it comes to morale in the county because everyone is suspect no matter what. And so, I think I've said this earlier, if we're gonna cut, then we better make sure we know exactly how important those areas are. And I think I've shared before, we don't need to take from the top and we don't need to take from the bottom. If you're gonna, everybody's got to share this and that's our job to make that decision. And of course, you know my favorite saying, Braveheart, you got two choices now. That's what I feel like, Bill the teen or the rat. So, with the rat, you get to say something. So, I feel like we're on the rat. But we got to take this very seriously. At least you laughed a little bit.
Ms. Grabill?
Well, that's a new favorite saying. I haven't heard that favorite saying yet. The-
That was, yeah, that was my favorite saying.
The, I, I just wanted to also remind, I think we all know this, but to remind our constituents, is to use Josie's terms, as tactfully as you can say it, is that we are responsible for looking out for the best interest of all of our students. And a lot of the messages and phone calls that I know I've received and you guys probably have too, is that they are pleading for something individually for their student and what is best for their kid, which is what all parents do and, and all teachers would do. So, that to me, it comes back to, you know, Dr. Barnes, you know, the uncoupling the position from the person. We've got to look at, this is the hard part. We've got to look at what is best for all of our students and kind of take some of the heart out, is that what is best for all, not just what is best for my kid, you know? And, and that's really hard, you know, to do. That's, that's really hard.
Something like that.
Ms. Chair, floor break.
Ms. Grabill was the next.
So, I, first of all, I want to say I agree with Ms. Barnhart. Like, I believe that us as a board should come together and decide what are our priorities, what we would like to, to see happen. And I know we're not everybody. We're just a part of this, this, you know, school board machine. At the same time, we have to be responsive to feedback and, you know, although to Ms. Grabill's point, you know, people are advocating for their own children, they're data points for us, but they're also where we have to be responsive because we are responsible to our constituents. So, it's important, no matter what the feedback is, and just because maybe someone's gonna say, thinking about their kid, I think, a lot of them are probably thinking about other kids too. So, I agree. I don't know how we make that happen, but I think we should do that ASAP.
Ms. Bradford?
While we're on that, something we got, I got an email about and I haven't had resolution. So, I'm gonna ask now in a public meeting, last year, we were told that the county commission had told us we had to cut eleven million dollars out of our fund balance and move it over to fund things. And I, I, I've been asking, what things did that eleven million dollars fund? And I don't think I've gotten that answered yet. And then, we heard that the county commission may have said, well, they didn't, they didn't tell us about that. But we were told that they insisted that we do it. So, can we clear that up while, while, while the cameras are running? You know, we were told as a board, we have to do this. But the county's saying, but they didn't tell us about it. So, there's a disconnect there and I'd like to, I'd like to get to the bottom of it.
So, every time that we do an appropriation, you approve it. Actually brings it to the board. So, in your budget, in the budget that we send, there is an appropriation. And so, when she's appropriating something from fund balance, you approve it. We don't do it without it. Through the years, when we were, we had eighteen million in our fund balance, they asked us to get that down. That was, did, that was shared from the county. We did get it down. And then each year, you can go back and watch those budget meetings. And then each year, you can go back and watch those budget meetings. We would say the X amount of dollars were, I forget the word, is it not appropriate? Or it's appropriated?
Fund balance appropriation.
Fund balance appropriation. And so then, when, every year when we were balancing those, that budget, we were having to balance our budget using fund balance. So when you're taking four million dollars out of that every single year, then it depletes it. And so the board voted to deplete that fund balance. And so then when we submit our balanced budget to the county, they see it also. So everyone gets to see it, it's signed off.
And we don't really, I don't really say these things are being used for fun, being funded through fund balance. How it actually works is, just like we're doing today, we, I'm showing X number of revenue projection, right? So on the first screen, so we'll just go back real quick. So on this screen, where I'm projecting revenue, I'm showing this is the revenue that we need for this balanced budget. And then what happens is, because this is all based on projections, during the year, for example, this year, state revenue came in less than we projected. Student enrollment came in less than we projected. And so when those things were happening, the revenue was short from what we had built our budget on. And we had already included in the initial budget of fund balance appropriation of four million dollars. And so what happens is when the revenue's short, we budget fund balance to balance the budget. We don't necessarily say, when we're budgeting this, four million dollars is paying for these ten things.
So to follow up on what Dr. Faust was saying, if I understood you correctly, we had eighteen million in the fund balance to start, and the county asked us to get it down. Did they ask us to take it down by eleven million dollars? Question number one. And then you've said, Dr. Faust, each year, we've taken X amount out of the fund balance. You've been here since 2020. So did we do that in 2020? Did we do it in 2021? Did we do it in 2022? Did we do it in 2023? So that's four years, if my little math counter here is working. So you're saying for four years, we've taken money out of the fund balance to balance the budget. Is that correct?
No, so I started September of 2020, the budget was already written and approved.
So we started 2021 then?
Mine would have been 21, the budget year of 21.
For three years.
Twenty-two. So 21, 22 budget year, 22, 23, and 23, 24, 24, is what we're working on right now. And so each year, you can go back and see where the board voted on the appropriation of fund balance.
So basically, what we're saying is we need to pay better attention to requests to take money out of fund balance.
Well, is the only way you would have balanced your budget? You, I mean, we knew that.
Somehow, it's been thrown under the bus. Of course, we approved that because that was what we needed to continue to do what we do best. And as Dr. Faust has pointed out, so many people focus on the negative, but our school system overall has done exceedingly well, exceedingly well, represented by test score. But I think we did the prudent thing. No one raised a question about, wait a minute, three years from now, you may need this money. And no one said, well, you might not want to do that. You know, we better be thinking about a hand, better be planning. The state's giving a pay raise again.
I did, I did.
But you didn't argue with us.
I was outvoted. I told you not to do that.
Okay, well, then you just answered questions.
Yeah.
Everything's vote, but we still did it. And no one came to us and said, you know, three years from now, you better watch out. I still think we did the right thing at the right time for the right reasons. Now, of course, we're paying for it.
And I'm sorry, I agree with you. So we just have to, now we just have to do what we need to do. That's, so it's not pointing a finger, you can't go back and undo it. It's, and I don't think it's, it's not going to do anything.
A lot of people are moving into this county, I can tell you that. The city's fast as lightning, you don't believe a drive around. I just can't believe that the school system does not have something to do with that. What we offer, both at the top and at the bottom. And I don't mean that.
Ms. Walker?
So in retrospect, I've been on the board since 2020. As one of the people that voted against the budget in 22, because I felt I personally, and obviously the vote was the board vote at the time, felt like teachers, because we had a salary study done, needed to have raises to live and work here. They were coming to us saying, we got two and three jobs, we go to food bank. And I could not unsee that either. So I know we've, we've been told, and I know I've had discussions with commissioners in the past about paying our fund balance, or reducing our fund balance. And I, I get that in a sense, but I know, I don't know if it's appropriate time to ask Ashley about the fund balance because I think we were supposed to come up with what would be appropriate. I think three times our operating, just in case of emergency.
Come up with a fund balance policy?
Yeah, and I guess in some way build it back up to that point. I know we can go to the commissioners if we need to, but we really want to make sure that we have money in emergency situations. Hurricane season's coming up soon, and I'm not, we don't ever get one life warrants. But that, that really did hurt us. So do we know what we've been told what our fund balance should be by the county?
That's up to the board. I don't, as far as I know, we haven't gotten anything official from the county commissioners saying what they, their expectation of our fund balance.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, because in the past, we have had expectations about our fund balance, and we have reduced it greatly because we had to. So I don't, I don't want us as a school district, want to be in a position where we're going to be going, oh, gosh, we need money to pay our bills, but we can't do that. So I think we need to work on that, maybe finance committee could do that.
We'd love to.
Yes, awesome, thank you.
Ms. Sutton, carry on, so we have a lot more to get through today.
Our instruct, our school instructional positions changes are going to be fourteen for AIG teachers, seventeen for EC teachers, and classroom teachers of forty-eight.
Can you tell us what that number is for AIG?
Yeah, sorry about that.
Fourteen? Thirty-four to twenty, so it's a fourteen.
Thirty-four to twenty.
Okay, thank you.
No, I'm sorry, I'm full of questions today. I, I'm just, the AIG thing is puzzling me. I'm just trying to figure out who recommends what cuts in that, that particular program. Because, like I said, I'm hearing things, but I don't know how that got concluded that fourteen was an appropriate number to cut. I know this is worst case scenario.
So the board, sorry, so the board can change, we just have to get to a dollar amount.
Okay.
So we put in what we consider worst case scenario and when we look at the schools and the ratio of what the state actually gives us. So a lot of this, we look at the state and those numbers. And then we put in, okay, this is where, this would be an acceptable number. But the board, at any, once we get the, you can change these, you just have to get to that dollar amount so we can, so we can balance.
So you're saying the state recommended cutting all the high school positions?
No, 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 no.
Okay, okay.
They, they give us a, a number of how much. And then we have over that in local.
Okay, thanks.
Can I just ask Dr. Faust for clarification on this? Is that these numbers are coming from your senior staff and their staffs? Because you asked them to say, here's what you got, start from zero, what do you think you need? So when we say who's coming up with these numbers, I think it's, it's not Ashley up there going, okay, let me pull this one out, you know, or you pulling this one out. You're, so just so we're all clear, is that it's, it's, it's the people that work for you had to, were asked to do X percent or, or no percent. Here's your zero, what do you need? So that's, I just wanted to give, so we don't ask that same question of Ashley every single time, is that you guys gave your best professional judgments on what you needed.
And they went round and round, and round and round.
I have heard that they go round and round, yes.
And there have been tears and laughter and hugs.
Huddles and.
Chocolate.
Yeah.
Chocolate.
Ms. Barnes, go to Dr. Barnes. Just want to also reference, on two separate occasions, we sat down with principals, both in groups and singly, to ask them what their recommendations would be as well.
Thank you, I think that's important for us to all just take in.
Ms. Sutton?
For school instructional support positions, there's going to be reduction here of assistant principals of four, guidance counselors nine, instructional coaches thirty-three. And all of those were funded through S R. Why that, that number's so high. Psychologists one, and social worker seventeen. School classified physicians, ECTAs sixty, office support three point five, Title I parent liaison one, pre-K office support four, regular TA positions eleven, therapist one point five. And then this slide shows, I believe this was asked at one of our work sessions, to be able to see the positions changes by funding source. And so that's provided here on this slide.
Yeah, let me stop, Ashley. Can I, I'm going to ask Ms. Barnum, with the drop on EC teacher assistants, we still, I want it to be said, we still would be able to follow individual plans, correct?
Yes, so we, again, you know, there were, there were tears in this. Dropping down to this level, we're still able to meet IEP requirements. We have to be really creative in our scheduling. And in the event that we have some critical situations, I'll have to come back to the table and, and make sure that we can provide for those. So at no point does this mean that a child doesn't get their services.
Wait, thank you.
Ms. Barnhart?
I, I have a huge problem with the EC drop again. I'm glad that you're presenting us a balanced budget, but I think that this is something that I would like some further information on, specifically in regards to the total minutes that we service in the district so we can see and comparing that to the capacity load and the caseload that our EC staff and TA work with. One, I don't like to have to see anybody having to lose their job. I mean, that's, that's not the fun part of this job. But one of the things, looking at this, is we have some hard to fill positions, and EC definitely falls in that category. And what I do not want to happen is I do not want cuts to be made in there because we don't have the funding for it. And then we not be in turn, we get a grant or something funded and we, we don't, we're not able to fill those positions. So I'm skeptical for multiple reasons with that. But, you know, when you're talking about turnover, some of these, you know, this is the worst case scenario. So if we're able to receive funding from different sources, I'm just saying that. So I'd like to see some more information specifically in regards to minutes and capacity caseload and have some further discussion with my fellow board members.
So I did bring the ratio information from the state limits. And one thing I want to clarify, no, this is, this is not to comfort level. This is, this is mathematical. And I will say, this is, this is the area that I think has to be restored in the event that there's an opportunity to do that. The, the state limits, and I'll share those out, oh, thank you. The state limits, this is a two-page document that has the, it's from the Policies Governing Services for Children with Disabilities, the state policy manual that is the EC bible. It's two pages back front. It gives you the overall class size requirement. And then on the back, it gives you the, the total caseload requirement. So one thing you will notice, when you look at the class size requirement based on the level of service and support defined at the bottom, you know, our, our programs fit into, into these. We as a district, and under my leadership in special education or exceptional children over the past almost eleven years, we place teacher assistants in classes more often than the state requires. And I will professionally tell you that that's necessary based on the needs of our students. So the state may not require a teacher assistant in a certain classroom that we locally say absolutely has to be provided to make sure that we meet safety and instructional requirements. So that is how we'll be able to make that, but we have to make other determinations. So we, we still probably have more TAs than some districts, but that doesn't mean we're comfortable with this number of reduction. Yeah.
Ms. Walker?
So this is the saying, this is where I'm having the heartburn as well. And I know we can do the minimum if we have to, I just don't think we should. Definitely from a lot, for lots of reasons, not just to mention it's the most important thing that we do here and we're required to do by law, federal law including. And that, this is probably what horrified me the most, seeing these cuts. Because, I mean, we're on the ground and we hear a lot of things, but there's just not enough human resources in the, in the buildings. And this reduction, heartbreaking or not, it's just, I just don't see how we can do it. So, I mean, if we're going to have, have a prioritization discussion, they have to be at the top, for sure.
Grabel?
So in the, the legislative updates that I had heard here, they gave us the ratios, the national ratios for counselors, psychologists, and social workers, and nurses. And national versus North Carolina. And in North Carolina, we are woefully underfunded in general. But when I was trying to, I was trying to calculate what I thought for New Hanover County, and then I, and I was getting like crazy numbers. So I was wondering, do we have that anywhere, Julie, on, on what that? Because it seems like a lot of our S R money was spent on that. And that's where we needed it to be spent, and we did. And so those ones will have to be, and I'm looking at, at all the numbers. But how do I calculate, are there different ratios for elementary, middle, high, or?
For, for some of the areas, there are different ratios. But in general, when it comes to social workers, counselors, nurses, yes, there's the National Association for each of those areas has a ratio. And then the state has an average of what the state sees. And I did not bring that information with me, so I'll have to give that to you. We have, I have some information that has been gathered by my team on the difference, like what is the recommended ratio? There's no required ratio. What's the recommended ratio? And then what is the average ratio? And then what are high performing providers? We also want to know that.
Yeah.
We did prioritize counselors and social workers, among other things. But we did prioritize our S R dollars within student support to provide lower caseloads. And that's just not something we can maintain at this point. But I can give you that, that information.
Yeah, because one thing that stuck out with me was social workers, you know, national level, one to two hundred and fifty students. Well, we know we're never getting there. North Carolina is one to one thousand and twenty-five, you know, students. And so I was just curious how close we were since, you know, we're cutting seventeen social workers and then guidance counselor. You know, we're not really cutting that many guidance counselors, but, and we're not, and we're only cutting like one school psychologist, you know. So we're not really too bad there.
Right, right. And to clarify, the, the ratios that you'll find are the recommended for that area for their association. So the social worker, the social worker association will make a recommendation. The, the school nursing association makes a recommendation, same with school psychologist. Many districts across North Carolina can't really afford to have as many social workers as we historically do. And so the, the, we will exceed the state average, but it, it's not really a level playing field across the state.
Gotcha.
Ms. Grabel?
Thank you.
Ms. Barnum, just help me with the, with just the row number. What's our enrollment for special, special ed?
We are somewhere around three thousand four hundred, maybe just, just shy of three thousand four hundred IEPs. That number is a little bit of a moving target because it can happen to, you know, change any given day. But we are somewhere around three thousand three hundred and upper, closer to three thousand four hundred.
Ms. Walker?
So I just want to make a point too, and I know we are talking cuts and we don't want them. But we're getting ready to go into discussion, hopefully next meeting about one discipline, but two, also mental health concerns that we have had, not just since COVID. But, you know, I've seen some alarming things on social media about fights in schools. And I just think that cutting these positions that are helping our, you know, the mental health of our students and our, and our staff is, and I don't even know, I, I know the county got funding from some opioid settlement, maybe they can pass some of that our way. I don't know. I just think cuts like this, when we're in kind of a crisis situation with our students, I think we really can't afford to do many cuts, so.
Grabel?
Yes, so, thank you. Had, had another question about, as we're going, it's on page twelve where we're talking about the school positions by fund. The, a couple of things I wanted to ask questions about there. So in, in the first, the tall column, it looks like the state has somehow given us twelve more people?
Yes, so the reason you see an increase there is we actually reduce non-salary lines to be able to fund additional positions. So that's why you see an increase in position numbers here.
Okay, and then next, open space, open. And then next, open space, open, where it says, four grants before three grants. Have we, first of all, is Perkins fall under this grant category? Since Perkins is a grant?
Yes.
Okay, so that falls in one of the, one of the three?
Yeah.
And pre-K is another one?
Pre, yes. Yes, pre-K is included in that.
And so what are the other ones? Because what, what my question will be going forward is, can we apply for more grants in any of these categories to help us? The, and I'm just wondering, which are the grant, what grant that we already have are we losing to go from four to three? And what is the third one? Or what is this, what are the, what are the three that we have?
So I, I can bring that. I don't have the detail here, but I, I can provide that.
Okay. And then the last thing are, over on the final column in federal, hundred and eight in new school positions being lost there. The, or being discontinued there. Are, does Perkins fall in there, or does Perkins fall in the grants?
I'm sorry. Perkins falls under federal.
Okay.
I'm sorry, not the grants.
Okay.
Mine kind of goes along the lines. How many grant applications do we have open that we haven't heard back from? I mean, I'm assuming that there's some. I know the endowment is on the rolling application cycle, and there's talk that they're changing some of the, but how many applications?
I don't think the endowment cycle's open yet unless I've missed something. They have not.
Mr. Cameron said it was, but, yeah, it's, that's a weird thing.
I'm just, I'm just curious, how many grants do we currently have open that we're waiting to hear back from? Do we know that on cover?
I'm not aware of any off the top of my head. Unless, oh, the, the, for the, for the snacks? No?
Yeah, we apply for the grant for Johnson pre-K, Head Start Grant. So it is the time to apply for that. So we are waiting to hear back from that, and should hear back from that by May.
And that, that's a grant that we already have, though, correct?
Which one's that?
Current grant we already have.
So it's not new money.
But we have to continue to get that to operate Johnson pre-K.
And do you know what the other two are? Are, are they in your department?
Well, we are looking at a snack grant for pre-K, but it, we have not actually started that process yet. But we are looking into that to try to help supplement some of the costs for pre-K snacks.
Ms. Bradford, then Ms. Walker?
This is with the grant. As you know, I've been a proponent of, of having somebody specialized on the staff that write grants. My experience in business and watching the municipalities for twenty years is that a good grant writer is just invaluable. We can't add any more to this budget. But is there a possibility, since the county seems to do pretty well with their grant writing, that we could have them review ours to give us some suggestions? I mean, I know we can't burden them with, with doing our grant work. But can we somehow bring, because the county is our parent organization. Can we not bring them into assisting us, reviewing anything, so that we get a higher percentage of the grants that we apply for?
I guess that would be a meeting, maybe a joint meeting where that conversation happens between the board.
Ms. Walker?
So to that point, we have, I think we have been talking about hoping to get that for a long time. And they do pay in dividends because they're gonna help us get, bring in a lot more money. I think my question actually was, did, did you tell us last time why the cuts in federal so much? Was that due to a change in policies?
So this reduction in federal, the largest piece of that is the ESER funding going away. But then there's also ten and fifteen percent reductions in those federal grants that we receive. That was an estimate on, for that revenue. And worst case scenario, once again, it could be that the, those federal grants, for example, Title I or EC, that revenue might actually come in higher. It may not be a reduction of fifteen or ten percent. But we have built this based on information that we were hearing from the state at the time we were developing the budget.
So just to follow up, the timeline on federal grants? Is that, is it specific, like year to year budget like ours is?
Yes. And normally, we receive federal planning allotments in May.
We might get through this, though.
No. Central office position changes, you can see here. So one in communications area, three in finance, six in HR, eleven in instruction, nine in operations, or ten in operations. Student support area, seventeen, and technology, eight.
Question on that, and might be for Dr. Barnes. Is there, is there any, are any of these positions going to be put back into the school?
It speaks back to what we said earlier about uncoupling the physician from the person. So our goal is, as attrition happens in buildings and schools with physicians that we deem are essential in those schools, then people from the central office can, can shift to those positions.
Right, thank you.
So that was a yes?
Sorry, yes.
Thank you.
And the same slide here shows the position changes by funding source. So just a different view of the same, the previous slide.
Can I ask a question on what is, Eddie, the, the capital? Is that like an engineer or a, like a sustainability person? Or what does that, what does that kind of look like?
So in the 2014 bond and all previous funds, there was a line item for program management.
Gotcha.
And so we staffed up, and those positions were paid through that bond.
Okay.
And so those positions are going away.
Gotcha, thank you.
So just help me. We've been here a while. These numbers up above each column, those are physicians, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And we also had some changes to non-salary budget lines. We had some increases in some non-salary lines that I wanted to make sure I shared with you today. We have increased the, by twenty-five percent, the school custodial supply allocation. We are picking up the curricula that we were paying for previously out of ESER. We are picking that up in this local budget. And we've also provided some budget for the new science adoption. We've had increases here for utilities. And then also, we talked about previously, an increase related to the charter school payments.
Ms. Cravill had her hand up.
Well, I, I was just gonna, I'll, I'll go back. I'll let her go.
The curriculum previously paid for from ESER and funding for new science adoption. The curriculum previously paid for for ESER, is that the Witten Wisdom? And Eureka Bath?
Basically, all of our curriculum.
But yes, mainly the Witten Wisdom and Eureka is where the biggest part of that was.
Why do I think that was already paid for?
It was, last year.
But it says it's an increase now, that?
Because it was paid for ESER last year, and remember, well, actually, I'm sorry, but, ESER is going away.
Right.
So we have to pay for, to keep the license, the work, the maintenance, exactly.
This is just the re-incurring cost, not the one-time cost that you get that first year?
And it's like ten percent of the initial cost, basically.
And can you remind me of that number that we, that we paid out of ESER for those two curriculums?
I don't know the number for just those two, but last year we paid over four million for all of our curriculum in the whole district. And now we're down to like one point seven, I think, for this, every curriculum asked. This is math for every school, science, so anything that we do, reading for the entire district. So it has gone down significantly.
Ms. Walker?
Thank you. So a question about the twenty-five percent increase to custodial allocation. Is that where each school gets their own budget for toilet paper and soap and things like that?
Yes.
I'm really glad to hear that, because we are so much for the end of the year, they don't have any money left for toilet paper and whatever else. And, and sometimes custodial budgets are the first to get taken. So I'm glad to see that. I mean, they need to have soap and paper to wash their hands and whatever.
Thank you.
And the reductions that you'll see in that second document that was provided, majority of that's gonna be through reductions to contracts, professional development, purchases of equipment and supplies. That's not by any means every line that you might see reduced in that document, but that's where the majority of the decreases are coming from. And then the last slide is the capital outlay slide, as talked about previously. The capital outlay request would be ten point eight million, with eight point eight million being requested from the county, and the remaining two million coming from state capital funding. And this is not a change from when we had our last work session. It's the same information. And that's all for my presentation.
Ms. Mason has a question.
I'm looking on this, the draft non-salary, salary budget. And I see that there, there are three individuals that aren't gonna be with us for the full fiscal year. Are we budgeting for the new individuals that will be coming in? Because I don't see that in here.
And you're looking at the non-salary document? Yes.
She's looking at, yeah.
Yeah.
I know.
And which page?
The first page?
The first page?
Very first page, very first section. It, it accounts for the loss of three of our board members as their terms are ending. But are we accounting for the three new ones that will be joining us?
Yes, so, for example, there is a line item, I think it's about the fourth one down, that has travel reimbursement. And it's not associated with any board member. And so what'll happen is, once we know the names of those board members, then I would allocate it down to their line. Okay.
Other questions? Ms. Cravill?
Yeah, the, before we go on to that one, can I, can we go back to the, actually, no, that'd probably be a closed session thing, but maybe I can ask. The, when we're talking about the classroom teachers and the forty-seven people reduction, is, is that all programs? I'm looking at like, because AIG teacher and classroom teacher, because some of them are the same, you know, they, they teach as well as do AIG. But like, I guess family life is, is, it's a program, not really classroom teacher. So is that appropriate to ask now, or we just wait to hear more about that?
I'm sorry, ask the question one more time.
The, in classroom teachers, does that include the, any, would that include, if it did, any of the family life teachers?
It does not. The family life is included in the central office.
In central office, okay. Thank you. So, next question was, I mean, there's a lot to go through here on this. I don't know, I would, I would rather get to closed session than go through all of these things. But for the Board of Education, contracted services were eighteen thousand dolla- I'm just wondering what that was, that we, that we had?
Ms. Sutton did that.
I know, but I missed that meeting. So could you tell me what that membership is? What that contracted services is?
Which, where at, which item is it?
Top line?
Very, very top.
I mean, that's not our NCSBA, and that is not our assembly, right?
Yeah, and I, I apologize. I don't remember, but I can definitely provide that.
Yeah, I'm sorry I missed that meeting. I know, and I know you did, but I didn't.
Yes.
Yeah, me too.
Is contracted service membership in NCSBA?
So I, I can definitely provide what we worked on in January for your budget so that you'll have that information.
Yeah, I have it, but I had questions on it. So it'd be great to have that updated.
Other questions?
So Ms. Sutton, I appreciate the capital outlay. I know we talked about this in depth. But the, the other looming question, there is the conversation of a potential bond this year. I feel like the time is short of that. But are we talking long-term planning as far as building with our county? And are we gonna have another prioritization meeting about those things with the board so that they know dollars amount, that they can help plan for adding space and facility? Or is that not? Because?
Not.
I'm not aware of another budget meeting to discuss that.
There's not been another meeting scheduled at this point. I think you're correct, and that we, well, we, we have, we do not have enough time to do it on Sunday.
Well, and they talked about the LGC and the approval process and where they're at, because we had some other projects countywide that they, so.
So I think those discussions, I think the priority right now has been on the operating budget and our annual capital.
I would like to see those discussions picked back up once that's finalized.
After we finalize this, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That's okay.
Probably say, probably say thank you. So, so I hate to even say this out loud, because, but I believe it to be true. I've been at one of the budget meetings, and there is no appetite for a bond this year. I have heard through the grapevine, I'm not gonna say who, which, what, whatever, that they, they perhaps will support some projects, but they do not want to do a volunteer. And I did hear this very recently at a meeting, which I wasn't, they didn't see me, so they didn't want to be there. And that's, that's a shame. But it's clear we need to do something, because obviously, Hanover's falling apart. And we have other projects that are important, Safety of Pine Valley, and also Dorothy, not Dorothy Donovan, it's a school. Thank you very much.
But I think from us, that we need to come together as a prioritization and just letting long-term things.
Well, I think they know. But it's not.
Okay, then Ms. Cravill?
Yeah, the, a couple of things before we, you know, we only have fifteen more minutes, but got two things, or three. So is this the very best we can do? Have we exhausted all of our avenues? Like, are we looking at the grants? Are we looking at reaching back out to the county commissioner, I mean, to the county, the endowment fund, perhaps in collaboration with the county commissioners? So I'm just wondering if you guys have talked about any of that in any of your pre-meetings? So, because I'm, I'm looking at, we only have applied for three grants. That just doesn't seem like enough. But, and I'm really, and I will just say, I'm very disappointed that the endowment fund turned us down for all of our solo asks. I mean, we were included in partnership, and I don't know any of the reasons why. And I didn't really ask. I just am feeling a little bit that, did we do all we could do? If we applied for the, if we applied to cover some of these shortfalls, then we did what we can do, and we didn't, we didn't have their support. So is there anything more that we can work with our county commissioners on, perhaps? Not putting pressure on, but convincing, you know, persuading the endowment that we, we, we need, maybe not to save us from the whole cliff, but to sort of help us rappel down the cliff, you know? And so I'm wondering if you guys have talked about any of that. And then the third thing, and maybe you talked about this, too, in your meetings, I'm still having a little bit of agita about when the, when the county was, and, and this is not bad-mouthing the county at all, because we, they are true partners, and we need them in every, you know, lockstep with us. But when they were talking about their proposed draft budget at several meetings ago, the community resource people from Port City United, one point three million dollars. The Elements expansion, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the Too Good For Violence program, three hundred thousand. Those are all very good programs, and we, the community will benefit from those programs. But I just don't think that that total of two point four six six million dollars needs to be credited to us. That, I mean, we could do a lot more in our student-facing endeavors if, with two point four million dollars. So in the conversations that you all have had, oh, where'd she go? You left. Has there been any talk about that, on how we can approach the endowment more succinctly? Or, you know, I don't want to say desperately, because we're not, well, not desperate, but the, but more urgently, that this, if they would help us rappel down the cliff, then we can figure out what really is best for our students, and not be told that we are gonna spend a million dollars on, you know, community resource officers in our school. So, you know, you guys were there, so maybe if you want to just?
So we're working. I'll just say that, I mean, we're working with them, and they're working with numbers, and so we don't have a final number. And that's why we're just going over. We, we're, we're working with them. And right now, we, We're working with them, and right now, we, we're still, we're still early in the game, and so we don't have a planning number for them, and that's what I was saying in the beginning, but there is conversation with the, with the county.
And I'll piggyback on that, since I piggybacked the whole day. But, you know, I think that, you know, that the county commissioners are very willing to roll up their sleeves, you know, I talked to Mr. Zappal the other day, he said, you know, please get at the turn around task force, and, you know, he said, you know, please get us some numbers so we can move forward. You know, Mr. Scalise also, Mr. Ibar, you know, everybody, you know, the whole county commission is very interested in rolling up their sleeves, looking at the endowment, looking at every, you know, every inch that we can go to. So, you know, some folks have been like, well, why don't you go, my neighbor said, hey, the endowment's got the money, just they'll write you a check. I said, well, then you go talk to them, and, you know, but we are looking at everything, working through their grant writer, and so we are, I, you know, it was a, you know, very good, as I shared, very good meeting, and, you know, nothing is written down or done yet, but looking at every, you know, because I, you know, I will reiterate, I haven't talked a lot today, but except for, you know, letting you guys talk, but I think it is really, really important that people understand that, you know, we would love to say, you know, we don't have to lose a single person, even maybe gain some folks, but, I mean, we have.
But we are going to have to lose people. I mean, that is, that is given.
Right.
So, how do we cushion the landing?
Right.
You know, I use the rappelling. You know, let's rappel down to a little plateau and hang out there for a little bit.
Right.
But I guess what I'm also saying is, I value the county commissioners and their, their thoughts and feedback, but I just don't feel like if they're rolling up their sleeves and like telling us what to do, like, we're going to give you $1.3 million, and you're going to allow community resource, you know, counselors to come into our building, that might, you know, if that's like the help that you didn't really ask for, that maybe you need it, maybe we can consider it, but, you know, do we have the latitude to push back gently, that we would rather you give us $1.3 million in this category versus that category? So, that's all I'm saying, so.
What I can say is that, since being superintendent here, the county has always told me, if you need something, bring it to us.
Right.
But you have to have a plan.
Yes.
And what you have to understand, and everyone has to understand, is what are recurring expenses? And so, you know, the different types of budgets, if you were to say, don't do anything and push forward, you know, 20, whatever, and then plus the new money that's in there, so it's basically about 27, so then you would say, that would be reoccurring every year. I can't do that, because I know that we have to do something in order to, unless the revenue, we are, we have to fix it so that we can balance with the revenue.
Right.
So, that's where we are conversing, talking about the revenue versus what we have, and how do we meet in the middle of the road so that they can help support it, without harming the entire community.
Right, yeah, I get you completely on that.
Ms. Walker, Ms. Patrick, and then Ms. Barnhart, and then Ms. Grayville. Oh, I didn't see that.
Well, just in ending, I'll piggyback on what a lot of people said, I think the county commissioners are beginning to understand where we are and where we aren't. And two, I still feel a void that we have not prioritized yet, and this is all but April. We're in the budget, we're going to set off an alarm no matter what we do, at some point we've got to prioritize where we're going to look the most. Now, they've given us cuts suggested, but we're the ones that are going to have to make the call. I just don't like leaving the meeting again. If we stay here to nine o'clock tonight, we need.
Yeah, I was also saying, what have we decided today? You just heard.
Exactly, thank you. I just feel like we leave with a void still, we have not, and Judge brought it up, we need to prioritize, are we going to cut exceptional teachers? If we are, let's say it. We're going to cut AIG, let's say it. I mean, we all have our pet peeves, we need to iron this out before we get closed session and personnel.
Well, I would like to piggyback on your piggyback about the endowment. I had asked this a while back, and we did ask for some funding for some projects, or some things that we needed, and we never did get that feedback, and I know that's probably not just us, I think, the meeting I went to, there were a lot of organizations that wanted feedback and wanted to know why, or what they had to do in order to get some funding. And I'll say, as a person that was not a fan of the hospital sale, but we are here now, and we have this wonderful endowment that's supposed to be life-changing for our community, education was one of the pillars, and I would like to know at some point, maybe, I don't know how, we can get in a discussion with the endowment on how it does help our students. And I'd also just lastly like to say, I mean, I feel like, I know the county's the county, and we're the school board, and we're separately elected, et cetera, but I just wish we would stop looking at it like we're separate. I mean, we're the second largest employer in this county, our people live here, work here, pay taxes here, they're important too, and I would like to us to be in more of a partnership and less of us as them, and, you know, because we do have to work together, that's what we're here for, and we all live here, so our children's education is super important.
I can, I can reiterate what I said earlier. My initial request was to go to a county commissioner and say, listen, everyone's talking about the endowment. I followed the entire hospital sale, all of that very closely when it happened, what can the endowment do to help us off this cliff that we're in right now? That was what I went to, to them, to one county commissioner initially. That county commissioner said, let me put some feelers out, let me talk to my board. That then came back to me, and then I went to my chair, who then went to the superintendent, then we met with the county. So, the endowment is involved in these discussions. Where it falls, it's anybody's guess. If you watch that meeting, you know that they're in flux, but Mr. Cameron said they're open for business, and I feel like somehow it's going to work out whether, you know, we just saw with the purchase of the building for nursing to where the county bought it, but then they got, they got money to cover it, so it's a wash in terms of county dollars from this pot to that pot. So, however it works out, I think it's going to work out, as long as we have to play ball. Seven of us, eight of us, have to play ball. If not, then we're going to be really out on the cliff, because then daddy's going to be mad at us. But we, you know, we have to, we have to do this thing that we're talking about. Why don't we talk about having lunch, ordering lunch, and then just keep working, and talk about prioritizing what we want to do? This, the people are going to be looking at us to say, you did this, so we might as well have a say in it.
Ms. Barnhart?
Mr. Chair, well, I am obviously in favor of having a session that we prioritize something. I have to look at my calendar, see if I can do right this second, but as I'm sitting here listening, I have a question and an ask for you, Mr. Chairman. Would you please reach out to the Endowment Board so we can have a joint meeting with the members of the Endowment Board, and see what kind of conversation we can maybe have after we have this prioritization meeting, so we can come to terms with where, where we are, where the needs are, and maybe help express that?
Ms. Grayville?
I want to add to that, may I suggest you contact somebody, one of the county commissioners before you do that?
Yeah.
So that we're back to what we discussed, in collusion, nothing separate, no surprises. Good idea, but I'll make sure the county commissioners know that you're going to do that, okay?
And if we do that, I believe that Dr. Faust and his team should take point, because they're the ones with all, I mean, with all the in-depth knowledge, and they're the ones who put together this budget, and have lived and breathed the Esser, you know, uphill and the Esser cliff. So, yeah, so before we initiate that, because, yeah, I just think we need, we need to make sure that our superintendent and his staff is running point on that for us, and, but we're clear on what he's running point with. You know, we've got our game plan, you know, zone man-to-man, you know, like.
Back in the day, well, I will, I have no problem talking, of course, with Dr. Faust, and I'll also reach out to Mr. Ibar, begin that conversation as far as that. Is there anything else?
Just one last thing, to Mr. Ibar's point of staying, I mean, obviously, I have things scheduled, and I cannot do that, and even though I would love to, I feel like we do, I think, we should have the prioritization meeting as quick as possible, so we as a board can say, this is what's important to us, and have the ask, I understand a balanced budget is extremely important, we all want to have to do that, you know, be able to do that in our own lives, but I'd like to present them with something that our hopes are for, and whatever that means, you know, yeah.
Our next meeting is 26, is that correct? Of this month, we've got a gender-rede meeting, do you know?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's four days away.
Two o'clock. To six.
With this group? Is it with this group?
Like, question for the priority, is that going to be different than what you did for how we created the budget?
Maybe. How did we do that? I don't.
You went around and.
Yeah, and I don't feel like we hit the dots. I mean, I don't feel like on this budget that we sort of hit the dots.
So, what, what I was thinking, Mr. Chairman?
What I was thinking is looking at what has been presented to us. I think some of us have heart palpitations on some of it. So, if we have a conversation and say, well, okay, if we're not comfortable with, well, five, what is that number amount? Because the dollar, does that make sense, what I'm saying? The dollar amount.
Planning numbers first, because what will happen is you'll be, well, we're like you hadn't done anything, because.
But those won't come until April 15th, is what you're saying?
Weird, hmm, not necessarily. I think if we can do it after, possibly after spring break, the numbers may come in, but if we get federal dollars, it's going to change everything. So, you may say, well, oh, I'm going to do, we should cut here, but then federal dollars will kick in, and then it's like, oh, we push it a dip, so I don't want us to have to do anything in vain, it's like, this is worst-case scenario. We know that this is, it's going to get better. This is the bottom of the barrel. So, if we can have from, you know, the state hasn't given us their planning numbers, we still have, the county is still going to be giving them, they, they're going to give us planning numbers, so it's almost as if you give it, I think, till spring break, right, and then we can possibly have a better outcome.
Okay, so we're not going to.
And that might give us a better chance for us after we've read this, we've heard the presentation, in our own minds, you know, do some prioritization, so that when we come together, it's not just like, oh, not that, or let's just do that, so that we can give them to, you know, to Dr. Faust, and they can, you can look at them, you know, and just sort of have a gut feel on what we're thinking, individually and collectively.
Thank you. First of all, I really do want to thank you all, because this has been a great conversation. You know, not a great conversation, obviously, we'd like, hope it to be a better conversation as far as the overall, but a very heartfelt and important conversation, I'll say that. Next on our agenda is a closed session, we'll have a short closed session. I call for a motion to go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11A1, 3 and 6, to consider personnel matters and maintain the confidentiality of personnel records under North Carolina General Statute 115C, 319 through 321, and I guess to consult with the board's attorney and preserve attorney privilege, I'm not sure we have the attorney on for this stuff. Is there such a motion?
If I'll second, I'll second that, if you.
You've got to make it.
Oh, make that, I'll make that motion, but could we just say 15 minutes, I mean, so that when I'm in there, I mean, I don't, I don't need this to be long and drawn out, I just had a couple questions, so if we just limit it to 15.
Okay, we get a second? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, we're closed session. All right, we're closed session.
All right, we have, we're almost there, one more. I need one more.
Come on.
Sound source contract.
I swear I did.
All right, we are back in open session, thank you all. And yes, we went a little bit longer than our 15 minutes, but just a minute or two. We do have our next, we have our consensus items. Is there a motion to accept the consensus items? A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second and discussion. Ms. Crable.
I just have one question, is the presidium contract, is that replacing vectors?
No ma'am, it's actually presidium, I think is how it's pronounced, I've been guessing too, so that may be it. This is to complete one of the non-monetary commitments on our lawsuit settlement, and this is the vehicle for that training. It's specific for this, it's not a county agreement for a long period of time, and it's costing us nothing, so.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all favor of accepting consensus items as provided, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed. Carrie, make sure, but you, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, yes, seven, zero. Our last order of business is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Yes, second.
All favor, please, adjourn and discussion. If not, all favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed. Six to one, that passes. Six to one now passes. Six to one, okay. We are adjourned.